Good afternoon, Chairman. I can confirm it is just after 5:30. The live stream has commenced and we are ready to start the meeting.
Thank you, Sammy, and good afternoon and welcome to the Economic Development Committee of the 1st of March 2021. I would like to advise that today we will be using Teams to provide a live stream to the members of the public. And please ask that you bear with us as we are dealing with numerous internet connections. Sometimes this can cause a slight delay.
Chairman, apologies. Could I just ask councillor Lawan to stop sharing his screen? So councillor Lawan, you need to press the... On your taskbar, there's a box with an arrow in it that you need to just press.
There you go. With a cross in it.
Sorry, I have a cross in it now. So if you press, it's a box next to the leave button. It's a box that's got a cross in it.
Ah, with a cross. Ah, right, okay, I'll get rid of that.
Thank you, thank you. Lovely, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I can confirm that Sammy Winter will be your team's host for today. We have IT support on hand if required and Christina Webb will be clerking the meeting today. During the meeting, all participants except for the chairman will be muted and this should remain during the whole of the meeting unless you have asked to speak. I take this opportunity to remind you that all members are invited to participate in the meeting, but would ask that you request to speak through the chat bar. The chairman will be notified of your request and he will then invite you forward to speak. Once you have been called forward to speak, please could we ask you to unmute yourself and then once spoken mute yourself again. When asking a question, please could we ask members and officers to refer to page numbers within the report or agenda for ease? If we have to adjourn the meeting today, the chairman will advise of this and the anticipated length of adjournment. When voting on a report today, this will be undertaken by electronic voting. Any member who has been unable to use this facility will be asked for their vote during this time. When confirming minutes and agreeing to exclude the public, unless any member raises an objection on these matters, these will be confirmed by assent. Chairman, I will just undertake a roll call of members present. Councillor Plant.
Yeah.
Councillor Carpenter.
Yeah.
Councillor Camden.
Yeah.
Councillor Kudina Akenback.
Yeah.
Councillor Hammond.
Yeah.
Chief Councillor Lawan.
Yeah.
Councillor Mogford.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councillor Myers.
Yeah.
Councillor Freeman.
Yeah.
Councillor Wainwright.
Yeah.
Councillor Brian Walker.
Present.
Councillor Colleen Walker.
Here.
And Councillor Tony Wright.
Present.
Thank you, Chairman. To advise officers present in the meeting today, we have Lindsay Barker, Strategic Director, David Gleason, Director of Planning and Growth, Michelle Burdette, Head of Inward Investment, Sammy Wintall, Corporate Services Manager and Christina Webb, Executive Services Officer. To confirm, we have James Allen from the Local Enterprise Partnership in attendance for item five today. And Chairman, we can now move on to the agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. Any apologies for absence?
I've not been made aware of any, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any declarations of interest?
No one has their hands raised, Chairman, and we have nothing in the chat bar.
Lovely, thank you very much. And now we're on to item three, the minutes of the 26th of October 2020. And this is to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 26th of October, which can be found on pages four to 11 of the agenda. Anybody has any comments? If they could stop me as I run through the pages. Page four. Sorry, page five, page six, page seven, page eight, page nine, 10 and 11. I see no comments. Take those as read.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chairman, we have no comments in the chat bar, so they can be confirmed by assent. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Item four is the Forward Plan. And members are asked to note the contents of the Forward Plan on page 12 of the agenda. Okay. Okay with those? Yeah, I know those. Okay. Item five is EU Exit. And members are asked to note the report, which can be found on pages 13 to 24. And I hand over to James Allen. Welcome, James, from the Local Enterprise Partnership to provide members with a presentation.
Good afternoon. I'll just upload the presentation now. Could you confirm when you...
I don't see anything yet, James.
Okay, thank you.
We can see that now, James.
Perfect, thank you very much. So, just basically what I'm going to talk about this afternoon is just basically a high-level factual overview of the contents and intelligence of the deal that we've received from businesses on the ground and business intermediaries. And then if it's okay, sort of take any questions at the end. So, I can see a hand up.
Adrian?
Councillor Myers.
Councillor Myers, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I've got... Can't display content. There was a problem displaying the content on my screen, so I cannot see it.
Right. If I stop presenting and then I will share it again and hopefully that will show for you. Apologies, everyone.
Okay, James, if we have a problem this time, I think I was copied into it earlier, so I can always share it if needed to be.
Brilliant, thank you. That should be coming up on the screen now.
Got it, thank you.
Brilliant.
Thanks, James.
So, yeah, as everyone knows, there was a deal reached between the UK and the EU on the 24th of December, which was signed off before the end of the transition period. The Trade and Cooperation Agreement is accompanied by a series of political declarations and agreements over nuclear and security cooperation and supervised by a partnership council. Importantly, for businesses and individuals, there are... It's worth noting there are further deals and decisions likely to be secured in the coming months and years and a range of key issues such as data adequacy, financial service equivalence and a commitment to continued discussions around access for services. In terms of the actual content of the deal itself, the headline aspect for goods was no tariffs or quotas on goods traded between the UK and the EU, subject to rules of origin requirements. This is also accompanied by new customs procedures through the border operating model, which was published last year, and I'll come on to that. For service businesses and the automatic recognition of professional qualifications, there's no longer one set of rules. Businesses need to comply with regulations in each individual country and individuals must check member state requirements for their qualifications. However, as mentioned, both sides have agreed to continue talking to improve access for the service sector moving forward. On EU programmes, the UK continues to have access to various EU programmes, including the 100 billion euro Research and Development Programme Horizon Europe, providing universities, research centres and innovative businesses with full rights to participate in calls. The Erasmus student programme will be replaced by the Turing Scheme from September. On data adequacy, something I mentioned earlier, a temporary four-month, which can be extended to six months arrangement has been put in place to allow personal data to continue being transferred while the European Commission makes its adequacy decision. The Commission has already launched a process towards data adequacy, which is in the best interest of businesses and individuals, both in the UK and the EU. As if an adequacy decision was not given, then both sides would have to exchange data based on individual international transfer rules. On state aid, the UK government has launched a consultation at the start of February to establish a new bespoke UK-wide subsidy control regime, which aims to facilitate strategic interventions to support government priorities. Importantly, that will include supporting the Covid economic recovery, protecting our competitive and dynamic market economy and ensuring subsidies are in line with international commitments. On the border operating model, there are new border controls which are phased into three different stages throughout 2021. The first stage is already in play now with full controls for exports. From the 1st of April, we have full controls for animals and products of animal origin and plants and plant products. And then from the 1st of July, we have full controls for... in place for all goods. Businesses can take a wide range of actions to be ready. And many are, but in terms of what they can do to kind of get started, make sure they have an EORI number. Consider using a customs intermediary to make customs declarations. Check if their goods need an import or an export licence. Make sure they understand their VAT responsibilities. Fully understand the rules of origin principles and use the Free Trader Support Service if they move goods between GB and Northern Ireland. For the immigration system, so from the 1st of January 2021, all non-UK nationals are now treated the same through the introduction of a points-based immigration system. So an individual must meet the criteria at the top right-hand side of this slide, so the mandatory 50 points that are non-tradable and then achieve an additional 20 tradable points for their salary, a job in shortage occupation or irrelevant qualification. There's a fast-track entry system for doctors, nurses and other healthcare professionals. However, most care workers are not covered by this scheme. In terms of exposure, the least exposed sectors include the tech sector, financial services, insurance and R&amp;D companies. And in terms of the most exposed sectors to the new system, social care, construction, food processing and wider manufacturing and the hospitality sector. In terms of the seasonal workers scheme, so this is slightly separate to the immigration system. This is a pilot which has been expanded to 30,000 workers for 2021 and government will seek to continue to build the Pick for Britain campaign and retain more domestic seasonal workers. On the EU settlement scheme, this is for EEA citizens working in the UK and their families already living here by the 31st of December 2020. So they are not required to go through the points-based immigration system. Instead, they can apply to the EU settlement scheme for settle status and have until the 30th of June to do so. And we're working with local authorities and working under the Norfolk EU Transition Group as well to promote communications to these communities to encourage signup. In terms of sectoral intelligence and analysis of the deal itself, we provided a sort of detailed breakdown in the full report, which is in the committee papers. So in the interest of time, I'm just going to run through a couple of sectors that we've sort of picked out. So to start with energy, so the LET Board and All Energy Industry Council have signed off an Energy Recovery and Resilience Plan, which looks to maximise our long-term opportunities, driving clean growth, boosting skills and innovation, taking into account both the deal with the EU and Covid-19. The energy provision to the deal supports and strengthens the UK and EU's respective energy and climate ambitions includes the way in which parties trade electricity and gas over interconnectors and work together on security of supply. Both sides have agreed to enhance cooperation on renewable energy, including in the North Sea. And for now, the energy chapter expires on the 30th of June 2026, unless both sides agree to extend the arrangement on an annual basis. Picking another sector, so the logistics and hauliers. For UK hauliers, the deal is not far off from before, with both sides recognising the validity of each other's licences and permits and full transit rights are included. Busting coach companies can continue to operate to, from and through the EU. And as I said, there's more detail on the other sectors in that full report. So some of the emerging intelligence that we're hearing sort of on the ground through the growth hub, through businesses and business intermediaries, there's been import-export disruption so far in early 2021. However, it's still early days for the new border operating model and we're only really likely to know the sort of full impacts once we're after that kind of final phase in July and businesses get used to the new system. Various businesses have sort of reported concerns around increased paperwork and costs. We've seen high demand for customs intermediaries. So the likes of freight forwarders, customs agents and the chambers of commerce are all seeing lots of interest for support on customs documentation. Once businesses are used to this paperwork involved with the new trading relationship, it may actually encourage more to look more globally with the new global trade deals being secured and the potential opportunity for a greater market share, depending on their choice of global markets. We will obviously continue to work closely with various partners, including DIT and local authorities to support businesses with their export practices and actively encourage inward investment into the region. Many firms' focus has obviously been on the Covid-19 pandemic, but with the easing restrictions, we're likely to hear more around kind of opportunities or challenges and we will also be able to adapt our business support accordingly. So in terms of the LET and kind of growth hub activity, on the communication side, we've produced a business script for growth hub advisers and partners engaging with businesses, which provides them with the latest technical guidance and offers a local flavour around funding and support available. This is updated weekly and circulated to around 80 recipients across the network. In terms of the growth hub, they continue to run collectively with partners across the Oxcam Art Growth Hub Cluster, a series of webinars for businesses which continue to the end of March, providing businesses with updates on various key issues under the new trading landscape. For outreach support, so with base funding that we received until the end of March, we appointed V4 Services to run a proactive outreach support programme for the LET and Growth Hub. So they are contacting around 3,600 businesses across Norfolk and Suffolk, providing them with a mixture of signposting to guidance and detailed handholding through what businesses need to do, but also importantly where opportunities might lie for them. And then finally, around business intelligence, we continue to share weekly business intelligence returned to a central government, local authorities and MPs capturing intelligence around the new trading relationship with the EU and also Covid-19. This captures the proactive outreach work I mentioned from V4 Services. And I suppose importantly, the information we capture in the kind of coming weeks, months and years is key to providing us with information around where the opportunities are that we can nurture or run with and how we can adapt our business support accordingly locally. So that is the end of my presentation and I can see some questions.
Yes, thank you, James. It was a nice flick through what was sent out in the paper, so very good. Thank you very much. Can I just ask a question before we go to the questions? And that is obviously, as we're now out of Europe and we're obviously now a world trading country, what is the LET doing locally to encourage businesses to trade outside of Europe and open up the economy to world trade?
So yes, as I mentioned earlier, one of the things where we're working closely with businesses to understand the kind of... Well firstly, what has potentially held them back in the past in terms of trading globally, but also working with them moving forward so that as we... As they get used to the sort of paperwork involved, really understand what the incentives to kind of drive more of that kind of global trade. So some of the things that we're already kind of hearing and seeing on the ground, for example, is for some of those that have been trading with the EU, they are... They could be a kind of small fish in a big sea. But actually, if, and this is just off the top of my head, but say if they were to pick a market like Vietnam, they could potentially be a sort of a large player in that country with a much larger market share. So these are the sorts of things of which we're kind of working with businesses. And we have that V4 Services that I mentioned earlier that are providing support to the businesses right now through sort of detailed kind of handholding in terms of what businesses can do and where the opportunities are. And so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, no, thank you for that. I appreciate that because I know Liz Truss has been around the world trying to get world trade. She mentioned 800 billion pound of trade deals, so I just know that that's an opportunity that's out there. I've got several hands up. I've got Trevor Wainwright, Tony Wright and Michelle Burdette with their hands up. So I've got Trevor first.
Yes, yeah, thanks for the presentation. Just, I mean, it all sounds very sort of rosy, but quite clearly there's a lot of industries already suffering badly. And I don't know how many, but obviously we've got fishing, shellfish, pigs, flowers, cheese. I mean, all these industries are now saying they wish they'd never voted for Brexit, but we are where we are. But just on the report, the report we received, page 21, on the potential economic impact, James, it says "The prediction was if a deal was secured, Norfolk and Suffolk's GDP would face an average reduction of 4% by 2030 and the UK average reduction of 3.5%." So quite clearly Norfolk and Suffolk are going to take a bigger hit than the UK. What is that worth in monetary value at the moment if we were to take a hit of 4% on Norfolk and Suffolk's GDP?
That is a statistic I would need to come back to you on, I'll be honest.
Well, yeah, I didn't expect you to have that information, but I would imagine it's a huge amount of money. So, you know, for Norfolk and Suffolk to take a 4% hit when the UK average is 3.5, doesn't really sound to me like it's a really good deal for Norfolk and Suffolk. Perhaps you could... But I'd be interested to see those figures.
Can I just ask you, James, those figures that Trevor's just now... Councillor Wainwright's just now... This is about the trade with Europe, I presume, because obviously by 2030 we'll have other realms of trade going on around the world, which will take care of that four and a half percent presumably.
So the important thing to note with the work that was referenced, this is a sort of January 2020 piece of work that was done looking at kind of the impacts of whether there was a deal or no deal. So those figures are kind of if there was a deal. But obviously, there are various things that we need to take into account. So for starting, obviously, A, we've obviously had the pandemic, but also B, which has been mentioned just now, importantly, we've got a deal, we're securing global trade deals around the world as well. So that is basically, that is just obviously one statistic, but there are... To put it all together, it's very difficult at the moment, obviously, certainly with the fact that the pandemic still sort of rumbles on and we're coming out of lockdown at the moment, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that, but the global agreements, as far as I know, we've only signed one so far and that's with Japan. We had all global agreements already in place with a lot of countries and they're still in place. But the only new deal we've signed, or an increased deal, is with Japan. So again, doesn't really sound like a good deal to me, but I appreciate that we've been, you know, we're in the pandemic and things are extremely difficult for everybody, but long term, it doesn't sound like a good plan, but I hope to be proved wrong, but we're waiting to see.
Graham, can I just come back on one point there?
Yes, certainly, Graham.
So it's also important to note that the government did also secure a wide range of continuity deals. And so with partners that we had global trading relationships with through the EU, we have managed to secure a wide range of those continuity deals as well. So that is also vitally important.
Yeah, but they're not new deals, are they? They're continuity deals. They're not new deals.
No, they're continuity deals which give a platform to build upon.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay. Tony?
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. Just very quickly, I mean, we've always traded with the world, even in the European Union. So it's not going to be a new thing for us. That's all of a sudden we're going to have all these extra business coming our way because we've always traded with the rest of the world in and out of Europe. Can I just ask one question? In relation to the workers and the criteria for people coming in, is there anything in place to look at the, for instance, construction works? Many of them are self-employed. So any self-employed workers from the European Union, how would they actually qualify under the new scheme? Is there a scheme for this or do they have to be employed? And secondly, whilst I've got the platform, just to say the concerns within the report, it's a very good report, by the way, complimentary to you for the report, it certainly goes into great detail. But where I find that there's issues are in terms of the recruitment of staff, such as, and you mentioned this in in the health and social sector, difficulties in recruiting staff there. Or obviously in construction industry as well, there's also going to be issues about staff shortages there. And the other issue which I think will impact on us, there's no measurement on that, unless, James, you can give us any figures on the expectation here, is on page 21, you mentioned the economic impact, that the intelligence suggests that there are going to be redundancies expected. I don't know whether you can put any figures on that from the intelligence that you've got, but obviously that is a cause for concern as well, that, you know, we're going into this, obviously out of the pandemic as well, which is going to create its own problems. But to have the exit from the European Union as well impacting on that, it could be quite substantial. I sincerely hope it's not. I hope that this is proven wrong and the report is wrong. But have you got any figures on the intelligence that you've got from the LET?
So just to take the last one, say, first, so in terms of the redundancies that we're likely to see coming through those mentioned in the report, that is actually looking at the kind of the impact of Covid. So that's sort of where we're sort of saying in terms of it's very difficult to say what the combined impact will be, obviously in the national lockdown, but intelligence is suggesting that that we will see redundancies and insolvencies coming through. So that was mainly as a kind of lean on the kind of Covid impact to the economy in terms of that one. But it's something that we are obviously continuing to monitor. We will say through our kind of growth hub supporting businesses where we can to try and support them around things like insolvencies, whether that's through an orderly insolvency or actually preventing it in the first place. And to take the kind of impact on specific sectors with the points-based immigration system, obviously, I mentioned construction was one of the sectors that, from the analysis so far, looks like one of the most exposed sectors. And we are actually doing an additional piece of work with the base funding we've been given around EU exit intelligence to look at the points-based immigration system and how that may affect our key sectors in the economy. And so that should shine a light on a bit more of the information that we're after here. Thank you. And so that should, should shine a light on a bit more of the information that we're after here. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Quite interesting, actually, following on from what councillor Wright has just said. Just below that is another paragraph saying tourism, leisure and hospitality. The evidence does not suggest that these sectors will be adversely affected by the Brexit deal, but we are cognizant of the fact that COVID nineteen has a detrimental impact. And I think that's the same throughout the, the report, actually. A lot of it is mixed in with, with what is happening with the pandemic as well as what's happening with Brexit as well. So I think there's a, there's a double edged sword here. One is that we have Brexit where we have opportunities, but also we lose some opportunities. And once the pandemic is finished, then hopefully the business will bounce back. Just to pre-COVID conditions, but I think that'll take probably about a year as well.
Yeah, Jim, just to come back on that particular, whilst it does mention obviously the COVID, I was going on the headline, potential economic impact. And it says back in January twenty twenty, which was before the impact, the metro dynamics produced a report of the potential implications of Brexit for Norfolk and Suffolk. That comes under the headline. It does obviously mention COVID and I understand and obviously accept that, you know, it's going to be an impact as far as COVID. And I was talking about the double whammy of the Brexit and the COVID. If we were going to be suffering under the Brexit, we're going to have this double whammy of COVID as well. And that's what I was trying to stress, the concerns that I have in terms of what is going to be for areas such as Yarmouth, which have suffered badly in the past in terms of the unemployment levels. That's, that's all I want as comments, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Camden?
Sorry, Chairman, we've, we've had a request through the chat bar, councillor Colleen Walker, it was just in there before.
The hands up, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'll monitor both for you, Chair. It's fine. Thank you.
Councillor Walker?
Yes, thank you. James, do we still ship waste across to Europe? And if we do, is this going to be accounted for in the, in the figures that you've put in the report? Because I haven't noticed anywhere in here about waste.
That is a very good question that I would need to, need to just double check. I won't, I won't say the answer is yes, but I do need to double check that before confirming.
That's okay. Thank you.
Councillor Camden?
Thank you, Chairman. If I'm just first thank James for a very informed presentation there. Regarding the, the actual report, you know, I, I think it's actually quite, quite positive for Great Yarmouth. I acknowledge the, you know, the, the consequences of what COVID nineteen is, is, is doing to the economy and businesses in Great Yarmouth. But this, this really is a, a positive issue. It's something that the constituents and our local residents all voted for and it's, it's come into effect. I, you know, the challenges that are mentioned in the report and that have been mentioned by some colleague councillors, you know, I relish the challenges that are coming because, you know, they said it would be a challenge to have a, have a signed withdrawal agreement and they said it would be a challenge to get a trade deal and both of which we, which we accomplished. So I'm, I'm not pessimistic about the challenges. It will be to get trade deals with, with other global economies. I mean, we've got, we've applied to join a trade area with eleven Asia and Pacific nations. You know, and separately, we're also holding trade talks with the US, Australia and New Zealand. So I'm really not of the negative opinion that, you know, we're looking at bad times ahead. This is just, this is a real positive for the economy and residents of Great Yarmouth and of Norfolk and of the UK as a whole.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Myers?
Oh yeah, thank you, Chair. Just got to page twenty two. And the second line in is business intermediaries and networks have highlighted the disproportionate increase burdens on SMEs, small to medium enterprises. Given the fact that the ONS statistical figures put about only eight percent of SMEs actually trade within Europe, plus another fifteen percent are involved in the supply chain with other companies that trade in Europe. Do we know what percentage of SMEs in Great Yarmouth or Norfolk are actually trading with Europe? Given the sort of ninety two percent actually don't?
Thank you. That is a good question that I will need to come back to you on. And we, we, we sort of had various conversations around kind of SMEs across the country. But in, in terms of the, the sort of Norfolk and down to the Great Yarmouth level, that's obviously something we'll, we'll need to dig out and share with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I can't see any more hands up. Okay, well, James, I think that's a really interesting report that gives a good holistic view of what's happening across Norfolk and Suffolk. I think specifically for Great Yarmouth, there are, there's a few things in here which may affect Great Yarmouth specifically. But I think on the whole, the report itself is telling us that the Brexit deal is now actually, how can I put it, in action and is working. There are going to be some, some difficulties along the way and I think you've highlighted those difficulties throughout the report. But they're not difficulties that can be, that cannot be overcome or cannot be worked through. So I, I welcome the report. I thank you for your time in presenting it to us. And along with my colleague councillor Camden, I'm, I'm more optimistic now after reading the report than I was before it, basically because I think it picks out certain elements that are relevant to Great Yarmouth and it's not going to affect Great Yarmouth to a great extent. I do think though that it's, as a country, we have a long way to go to make sure that we're a good trading nation with the rest of the world.
Chair, sorry, there's just a question being raised in the chat bar. If James could provide a written response. So we, the questions that have been asked that didn't get the information, James has said he would apply, we will get that out to members.
Is that all right, James?
Yeah, that's, that's no problem at all.
If you forget what the questions are, I'm sure Sammy will get them to you.
Yeah, that's fine. We can get them across. No worries.
We're taking notes, but I know it's, I know Sammy takes notes, so it's not so bad.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, James. All right, moving on, we have, we just asked to note to the contents of the, note the report which can be found on pages thirteen to twenty five. I think we've noted that and we've had a good conversation on it. Moving on to item six, economic growth and delivery update. Members are asked to consider the Head of Inward Investment and the Regeneration and Fund Management Report, which can be found on pages twenty five to fifty one of the agenda. And this is to be presented by Michelle Burdette and Simon Best, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to do a double act here. Simon and I have, because there's a lot of detail coordinated a presentation. So Simon's going to hopefully pick that up and share the screen for us now. While he's doing that, I'll just do a bit of an overview. The economic growth paper summarizes the steps that all council officers, but in particularly those that have been working on the Economic Growth Action Plan and Strategy have been working towards, aligned with our recovery plan that was supported in summer last year. The key highlights of this work are really the efforts that have been presented to drive and deliver the financial support via the grants. So if you can just pop to the next slide, Simon, that'd be really helpful. Please. So the annexes that are presented with this report present the action plan and the progress against each of the objectives and the aims and the deliverables, as well as the aligned pathway to recovery plan, which show the three short, medium and long term goals and the progress against each with specific projects and programs that have been underway since the start. Included in the paper, as I mentioned, is the significant levels of grant and you can find those in section two. In particular, two, section two point one three shows how we've provided nearly ten thousand grant awards in total, coming to around forty five million pounds worth of funds. And in two point, two point two, it explains the massive uptake, not least because of the support that we've been providing to businesses in terms of the LEP grants. As you can see, in twenty nineteen, twenty, businesses applied for over a hundred and forty six thousand. And in the last year, so twenty twenty to twenty one, seven hundred and sixty, seven hundred and sixty six thousand. So that, that estimates or provides evidence in two ways. One, businesses need the funding and that, that's evident because of the COVID pandemic, but also that the team are prioritizing and the officers within the, the field are prioritizing support to ensure that businesses actually access the funds as they're entitled to. And of course, that was a priority of the, of the recovery plan as well. And other things that the paper highlights include the BASE pilot, the Kickstart Programme. If members recall, in the last Economic Development Committee, there was a proposal which was endorsed to support businesses to access this new programme, to get placements in their businesses as part of that national government approach. Sixty three placements have been supported amongst twenty six businesses in Great Yarmouth and we are continuing to support those with the three gateways that are already in place. Something that we've been picking up as part of the recovery plan also is to provide webinars and surgeries so businesses can fully understand exactly what's available to them, not just in terms of grants, but in terms of policy support, understanding more around what impact some of the closures have had in respect of the pandemic and also thinking in advance, thinking ahead. Officers have been working up direct business engagement through key account management approaches. So if you can go to the next slide, please, Simon. In terms of the restart grants, in addition to the grants that we've given out nationally, you will probably have seen that there is a national announcement for five billion being provided through restart to allow businesses to reopen on the high street. We don't have a great deal of information at this stage, but it's anticipated that councils will be looking to support the rollout of that. And we're in a good position because we've developed schemes, not just through the, the national government ones, but also through locally adopted ones such as the Winter Adaptations Grant Scheme that we were successful in getting over four hundred thousand pounds from the Norfolk Strategic Fund. And all of those grants have been provided and we're now closing that winter adaptations grant out. If you could go to the next slide, please, Simon. So in terms of the economic impact, so this is something that, that we've been taking a dual approach with. We've launched a survey, as you'll see in the report, we've done that in partnership with all Norfolk authorities, aside from Breckland, who, who have done their own engagement with businesses. And we've been getting raw data just to hear exactly how, not just the COVID pandemic, but also the impacts of the EU exit have been felt by businesses. In addition, we've done analysis across local intelligence and national intelligence from credible sources. And Simon will come on to those in a moment, which will perhaps lay the foundations for some of the additional work we'll be doing shortly with the additional restrictions grant. So at that point, I think I pass to you, Simon.
Thanks, Michelle. I'll pick up there if that's acceptable to everyone on this slide. So aside from the public health angle and in access to high quality contemporary intelligence on both the immediate and longer term needs of an impact on local businesses, their workforces and key parts of our economy has been a challenge since the outset, really. Katavia, the Greater Yarmouth Tourism Business Improvement Area has been actively surveying its members since about day one. The same businesses time after time, which provides a really useful perspective, enables us and them to track priorities and sentiments as they change over time. As Michelle also mentioned, we're also working with other boroughs. We're also working with the county and with NODA, the Norfolk Office for Data Analytics, to assess and compile some local data. And our first survey that we sort of organised ourselves and we're running in concert with other districts, ran between April and June last year, at which point the first national lockdown ended and frankly, businesses were expressing a certain amount of survey fatigue because there were big surveys from all different directions, by the Chamber, by the Leopard, by others as well. The current survey has been running since about January. We lead on behalf of six of the seven Norfolk districts. And we feed headline findings back up to the LEP and the key headline messages from that have been updated and presented to you in the report in paragraph four point two point seven. As Michelle says, in terms of the wider national impacts, there is, there is a lot of information out there, an awful lot. And a lot of what we've had to do is try and cut through some of that noise to focus in on the bits and pieces that are actually relevant to us and apply that at a local level. And that takes the form of various projections and various scenarios, as we appreciate the entire situation with the pandemic has been fairly dynamic, fairly fluid and can't always be easily disentangled from some of the impacts and structural changes that James has been alluded to as part of Brexit. And we've tried to combine that and overlay that onto our local data to give us a better perspective on which to inform the adaptation, the ongoing adaptation of local delivery to the circumstances. There are a couple of slides, I'd like to, a couple of graphs I'd like to show you now, if that's okay, which highlight some of the local indicators that we're using. The first of these is looking at job seekers allowance, which, claim accounts, which is a fairly useful indicator of the impact on the local residents and local workforce. This graph combines information that we have locally via partners at County and DWP and overlays it on to Office for National Statistics data. The period that we're looking at there in particular is the pink highlighted area, which shows how the percentage of local working age population has been affected, has increased during that period affected by coronavirus restrictions. That rough approximate shape has obviously been mirrored in the Norfolk picture, which more or less represents the wider national picture too. The second graph I wanted to show you was this one. This graph was prepared previously for our future high streets and town deal programmes. And it looks, the blue dotted line, looks at how the pattern of wider decline of footfall has affected the town centre in terms of the projections around the trend lines for town centre commercial vacancy rates. That is an issue we've certainly found borne out by both the national data, our own data, a particular susceptibility obviously on those enterprises, those organisations, which are primarily driven by footfall. So retail, hospitality, leisure, that kind of thing. So this kind of highlights really what a marked change we saw during the national lockdown and that kind of period that ends just as the first national lockdown was ending. It was quite pronounced. So we have certain amounts of local information to hand, but obviously we're trying to then overlay the kind of bigger picture stuff that we're getting from other sources too. Peppered throughout the report in sections four, four and five are a number of sort of informal proposals that correspond to some of the some of the feedback and findings that's coming out of both the national research and our more local. And I think Michelle's going to cover those in a little bit more greater detail now.
Thank you, Simon. So taking all of that in mind, as members will, will likely be aware, the council were lucky or allocated, I should say, two point eight million of additional restrictions grant in two separate tranches. The majority of that has been prioritized in terms of the phasing of delegated grants to businesses that have not been eligible through the L R S G or have, but have sought additional funding to assist them in this current pandemic. So far, officers collectively across the board have supported a number of businesses giving out around six hundred thousand pounds of that. And the intention is that the scheme for the wider business support programme aligns with the evidence that's been brought together in terms of that demand and need that Simon has provided an overview on just there. So taking the, the broad understanding in line, Simon, I don't know if you can go to the next slide. I don't know if you missed that, but I think there's a summary on that. We hope to design something in more detail for launch in the first week of April. We all are aware that the businesses are desperate for this funding now. And the additional restrictions grant is available for dissemination up to the end of March next year, so twenty twenty two. The evidence has all come to culmination of these three sort of schematic ideas. One is of course around business recovery and startup, with a number of businesses either not using furlough anymore or, or making redundancies as we've heard. You know, that might be an issue as we move into the summer. Startup will be prevalent because lots of people tend to use their skills to set up their own company. And as such, we're hoping to do delegated grants to, to support enterprises to do just that. In line with other districts and boroughs to make sure that what we're doing isn't at odds with, with the rest of the country. isn't at odds with the rest of the county. And as I say, the evidence suggests that that's something that would be well taken up. In terms of the second thematic, we've got digital transformation, so ensuring that our high-street retailers can get online if they're not online already, and not just get online, but actually use some of the intermediaries that a lot of everyday people use, such as Amazon, Etsy, eBay and others, to make sure that people are diversifying not just their products to a bigger cohort of purchasers, but also making sure that they are digital-ready. And then in line with the Restart programme, so again, certainly the demand and need is there to support the High Street recovery. And of course, that aligns with all of our major capital investment schemes with the Future High Street Fund and the Town Deal. As you can see by the paper, there's quite a lot of detail in both the cover paper and annexes one and two. We have been working collectively to submit the Future High Street Fund, both in terms of the original application before Christmas and the revised bid, as well as the Town Deal Investment Plan, both of which are focusing on regeneration, construction and growth for the economy. So Simon, I don't know if you want to just do some overview slides to wrap that up?
Thanks, Michelle. I'm just waiting for the slide to change here. So Future High Streets Fund, this is one of the two big structural programmes that Michelle mentioned just then. This is covered in section 6.1 of the report, which provides the update on the programme. I think it was on Boxing Day, it was announced that we'd been awarded £13.77 million, which was 69% of the original ask. That appears to have been a top-down mechanism they used to provide that. All but 15 of the qualifying towns were awarded 69% of what they asked for. Policy and Resources Committee previously approved recommendations to review that programme to enable us to draw down the highest possible value by focusing on those projects that could be delivered at pace, had fewer obvious dependencies and co-dependencies, and delivered the best value for money in terms of impact and return on investment. These revisions were submitted to MHCIG, and we are advised that an outcome, effectively heads of terms to which conditions will be attached, are expected by the end of March at the latest. Second of the two structural programmes we're looking at is Town Deal. And that's covered in section 6.2 of the report. This focused on the submission on the 11th of December of a stakeholder-led town investment programme, which was pulled together and submitted by the town board with its independent chair, and it featured an awful lot of community, public, enterprise consultation through campaigns like My Town, which you've probably been aware of or going on throughout most of last year. It was quite a comprehensive document. We've not heard either way how that's gone yet, but as of today, the government has indicated that it will be making announcements at the same time as the wider budget announcements on Wednesday. The outcome of that will hopefully be positive, and the outcome will be that we would then be expressed, we will be invited to progress to a non-competitive Stage Two of that process, whereby we start pulling together detailed business cases for each of the separate projects therein. It was obviously a competitive programme up until this point, but from this point onwards, it's more about ensuring that we are able to justify and provide the additional information required to bring those projects forward.
It does. I was just about to pass back to you, Chair. That concludes our presentation. If there's any questions on the paper or the annexes, please do come forward now.
Thank you, Michelle and Simon. Excellent report, absolutely first class. It's just one of those things that we're proud of in Great Yarmouth, that we have a team that can put together a report like this for the future of the town. I'd like to just mention, first of all, the business support and next steps for recovery in annex one and two. Annex one and two are a superb piece of work. I think if everybody's read those annex one and two, it will show that there's a plan to move forward in this town and to create the kind of, how can you put it, the kind of community that we want to create. I just want to pop to the strategic programmes, what you've just mentioned, the Future High Streets Fund, the Town Deal. The work that's been put into those two things alone would make you weep, but I just want to congratulate again officers on making sure that we have a real investment into the town centre and into the towns themselves, because you've done this during a pandemic. You've done this when you've had your ordinary work to do, and you've also been dealing with a pandemic as well and organising things in the town that, for example, how you do the additional restrictions grant. All these additional grants that you've had to deal with throughout the last year, plus this work that you've done as well, and the content and the quality of it is outstanding. So I just wanted to say that before I bring in the people who put their hands up. And I've got Tony Wright and Paul Hammond at the moment. Tony?
Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, just a couple of points, Michelle and Simon. On page 26, this is the LEP distributed grants. Just on the third column, 202021, it says grants approved 702,000, value of grants claimed 353,000. And bear in mind, we're in the last month of the financial year. Because obviously, looking at the other two years, you know, it's substantially higher than the grants approved that we actually received on each of those years, but we've now let 50% of what we've had. I mean, how does that actually work in terms of claiming that money? What would be the final figure?
So that's a really astute observation. So in terms of the grants, they're not, when they're claimed for, they have a period of time to claim it down and spend that money, and it doesn't always fall within the year. So if you're applying for something, for example, the 766,000 for this year, they will have a period of time to spend it. So you'll find that in the following year or years, the amount of grant claimed is going to increase because they're going to be taking that up that they might have applied for in the last quarter of the existing year, so to speak.
Is there a timescale for that then, Michelle?
They're project-dependent, so some projects might be a year, some might be two, and some, of course, might be longer than that, although there is a restriction in terms of the actual length of any, you know, the end length of any particular project that I believe is no longer than three years.
So next year, we would expect that that figure 202021 would be substantially higher than the figures that we've got there at the moment? That would be the prediction?
That would be the prediction, though, of course, we have to be mindful that there might be projects and businesses that are unable to claim that grant because they're no longer functioning, but you would hope that that wouldn't be the case. And of course, the Enterprise GY Service is doing absolutely everything it can to prevent that happening.
Yeah, just a couple of other observations, really. On the, on section four, it says, again, it's a word of caution here, is in terms of the job seekers allowance and claimant, we are disproportionately being affected. Once again, it's something that affects us, and I mean, it's obviously, we're pleased that we're getting these grants, now these government grants to invest in the town centre. But on the actual graph on page, on 4.36, page 31, what does indicate quite clearly is that the yellow dotted line, polynomial trend line for town centre vacancy rates, it has been steadily increasing in terms of vacancies since 2014. And it's gone up very, very small in terms of the pandemic time, in the pink category. So we were always on that trend where footfall was going to be decreasing. And obviously, the pandemic itself has had a profound effect on that. I mean, do we see that that will actually reverse in terms of, I mean, obviously, with the money coming through, that in the next 12 months, that we would see reverse of that? That there will be obviously an increase in business within the town centre in the future, obviously, once we get the town centre deal? And of course, bearing in mind that the Marks and Spencer site should be established fairly soon, and hopefully with the library coming into the town. So it's just an observation, really, to say that, you know, obviously, since 2014, the vacancy rates were already on an increase in terms of the shops, and it was something that really needed to be arrested at that time.
Yeah, I think that the pandemic has completely accelerated what was already underway, and I think that's the very nature as to why the Future High Street Fund was developed and the Town Deal in the first instance. But I think Simon's much closer to the analysis than I am. So I don't know if you want to pick up a response on that, Simon?
Thanks, Michelle. Yes, I think you're right. I would also echo what's been said there, that there is a longer-term trend around both declining footfall and increasing commercial vacancy rates, which predates the pandemic. What we suspect is that the pandemic will have accelerated a lot of underlying structural factors, such as the trend towards online. And a lot of what we need to do is to enable local independents, smaller businesses, to be able to access that for ongoing revenues. I would also stress that that is a trend line, and we have struggled to obtain current data, which is effectively a walk-around clipboard survey to ascertain current vacancy rates, because it's often, I mean, this is normally undertaken by the bid, and it can be difficult for them to distinguish what is an empty shop and what is a shop that has been closed as a result of restrictions in the current time. So whilst the footfall data is accurate as of the end of July, looking at that, there is some caution to be advised around vacancy rates, although the overall trend is absolutely representative.
Thank you very much. I think that answers your questions, Tony. councillor Hammond?
Yes, thank you. Very good report. Page 29, it says 80% of workers cannot work from home. Is that anything to do with the fact that we've got poor internet in our rural areas?
It is something that we've also spotted, and we've done, bear in mind, the analysis does ask for postcode and business type, and the majority of those are actually in the hospitality trade. So it's about being out, doing the business either in a restaurant or a bar or hotel. And that's why there's been an issue that those individuals are unable to work from home. That doesn't exclude others that have issues with digital connectivity, which is part of the reason why we're proposing to do this in respect of the wider business support. But that is, that's what we're finding at the moment, and we're still gathering intelligence to test that.
Okay, thank you. Simon, did you want to add to that? You look like you wanted to.
Sorry, Chair. No, I was just going to reiterate what Michelle did. I think something like 40% of the total beneficiary self-identifies being from the tourism sector, which obviously struggles to put its staff to meaningful commercial use when they're working from home.
Okay, thank you. Councillor?
That's a 40%, doesn't it, then? If you're saying 40% of tourism, then that leaves 40% because it was 80%.
No, it does. Clearly, the, I could provide a further breakdown. It was 40% of the total respondents self-identifies being tourism, which may include leisure, may include hospitality, may include retail. But clearly, a number of respondents aren't explicitly identifying as tourism. Yes, so that paints an overall picture for us. We obviously have a certain amount of work to do, is then teasing out from them what the underlying reasons are. But certainly, digital transformation and digitalisation is part of the response.
So are we going to have any plans to try and get better, in a little bit of just levelling up?
I can answer that for you, councillor. The county at the moment is at 98% coverage as far as good broadband is concerned, but there is an average 2%, which is really, really difficult to try and deal with because they're not commercially viable to spend the money on getting that 2% in. But the county is working with BT and other broadband providers to try and make it a better service for those in the not-spots. I think in Great Yarmouth, we have a very good coverage, but we are trying to improve that from four to five G now.
Okay. Thank you. councillor Myers?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, an excellent report. And there's just one thing, looking at the sort of graph figures and there's lots of shops on the High Street and High Street presence, it's already quite alarming looking at the graph. There's a consideration that online retailers who have bought up large chains have actually kept the name of the chain, but have failed to invest in a high-street presence. And that's happened on two large occasions, two large chains. So I'm just wondering, is consideration being given if we're going to try to fill the shops? As opposed to not necessarily mix with large chains who are vulnerable to online presence and being bought up by them if they struggle to make money? So a more diverse and sort of unique market area for the types of shops that, or the type of businesses that we wish to put in the shops? Is there sort of any consideration or encouragement with regards to that? Thank you.
Are you thinking in terms of the kind of variety, rather than all retail? Thinking of economy, animation, that type of thing? Because if that's the steer of the question, I would say yes.
Yeah, more singular type shops as opposed to shops that belong into two larger national chains.
Yeah, so that's part of the Future High Street Fund programme, and the variety that's being presented in terms of the marketplace aligned with the footfall that we're trying to encourage through the Learning Hub and the animation of the space itself through Arts and Culture will ensure that people are coming not just to shop, but to actually enjoy the space that they're in. So that would include a variety of offers there, that would be bars, restaurants, hopefully, things that people can see and do that don't just necessarily mean retail. And that variety will mean that the market and the town centre is less susceptible to long-term impacts of larger chains withdrawing from the town. Simon, I don't know if you've got any particular reference to the Future High Street Fund you might want to add in there, but I think in answer to your question, Adrian, yes, that is the intention.
That's great. Thank you.
I don't really have anything to add, Michelle, other than point out that the whole Future High Streets programme really was about building in resilience and future-proofing for the town centre. So the pandemic has in some ways emphasised perhaps the importance of that, and we're very lucky to have that opportunity already in the pipeline.
Chair, you're muted.
Thank you very much. I love talking to myself. Thank you, Michelle and Simon. Excellent report. And you're absolutely right. The whole idea of this is to try and make sure that we have a future for Great Yarmouth, which isn't just necessarily retail, but also anything alternative to retail that a town centre can be used for. And you seem to come up with all the good ideas. The agenda says that members are asked to review their appended economic growth strategy, delivery plan update and recovery progress reports, which we've done. Two is to review and comment on the development of the Wider Business Support Programme proposed as part of the investment of the Additional Restrictions Grant allocation, building local business support capacity, ensuring schemes are coordinated in line with other district and borough councils. I think we've had that from the report. I think members are happy with that. Are members happy to accept those recommendations? I'll take it that silence means yes. Thank you very much. Move on to item seven on the agenda. Offshore wind competitive project generate brand update.
So again, this is another presentation, so apologies for that. Sarah and I will do a double act again. I'll do an introduction to the purpose of the paper and what we're trying to achieve and the next steps, whereas Sarah, as our offshore renewables marketing manager, will go through the journey that the brand has taken to get us to the end result that we're hoping to see today. So as the paper details, if I may go straight to that, I think it's widely understood and acknowledged that Great Yarmouth is absolutely positioned to maximise on the offshore wind and wider renewable energy sector. And of course, in particular, that related to the port area and the supply chain that will support that. This project came about due to a need to not just review and update our existing brand, the East of England Enterprise Zone, but to answer the call from private industry who actually approached us to say, this is something that would be really good for Great Yarmouth to maximise. So we are working in line with other major brands, which you'll see in the paper, such as Aura, which is promoting the area up towards the Humber area. The result of the approach is to go through a brand. The All Energy Industry Council is the kind of guiding body that has oversight of this particular approach. And the industry that sits around the table has gone through each of the stages to culminate in our strategy, not just about the brand, but also the values and the long-term outcomes that we're trying to achieve from this partnership. The LEP is the funder, so we've brought match funding in to develop this particular approach. So it's come at nil cost to the council, aside from some in-kind time. And the long-term goal is to develop And the long term goal is to develop a strategy that will roll out and bring in land inward investment from all areas of the world in terms of offshore wind. And we're already having conversations with businesses as a result of some of that engagement that we're doing with All Energy Industry Council and other wider partners such as the Catapult. So in terms of the actual stages that we've taken after we were secured that funding, Production Bureau were procured, they're a consultancy, and they've worked at length with Sarah over the last, well, Sarah you'll be able to say, but I think it's been around six to eight months, to do a review of what exactly is required and develop the brand going forward, which you'll see tonight. The progression of the brand sort of highlights the stages that it's taken to get to where we are. And the next step, which we won't go into a great deal of detail because we're not quite there yet, is the marketing strategy and how that will be rolled out, given that we are at the tail end, hopefully, of a pandemic and many of the events are virtual. But I take on board the comments that have been made earlier tonight in respect of how we might be able to promote the industry and Great Yarmouth to the industry as a whole, rather than just the local area or Europe. So I think at that point, Sarah, I'll pass to you to do the presentation from where we were and to where we are in light of the fact that we are nearing the end of this process.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. I will just share my screen. Sorry, my screen is not playing. Just go back in. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Fabulous, thank you. So as Michelle touched on there, this project was an ask from the industry and they wanted us to look at the East of England Energy Zone, and look at whether we need to refresh it or a completely new brand in order to deliver a cohesive and collectively owned brand that can really have one message and amplify the strengths of this area in terms of offshore wind, but also the other areas of energy that we have here, aiming to maximise our visibility with government, but also with investment nationally and internationally. So our top line, this brand needed to be bold and clear, flexible, international, dynamic. The industry and the private sector. Sorry?
So right, you can continue.
Okay. So private sector and industry are key to the success of this. If we don't, if they don't adopt it and embrace the brand, it won't be a success. So we've spent a lot of time with focus groups and research with the All Energy Industry Council and the LEAP and several other stakeholders to get the existing position of the region and also to find out what they think we should be doing. So that formed an important part of the process. And the top line findings of that were that as a brand, it has three purposes. We need to be a gateway to business who want to come into the region or want to expand within the region. We need to be a partner to business, but also to stakeholders. And we need to be a mouthpiece for the region. There are so many exciting projects and businesses and opportunities within energy in this region that we don't shout loud enough about. Again, there are three audiences. There's businesses, again, those who are already here or want to expand or diversify, and businesses internationally or nationally who want to move here. The policymakers and government and the general public are the third one. And the messages overall around that commitment to net zero, we are a clean energy region, we have all energy in our region, we're not just offshore wind, we have gas at Bacton and we have onshore renewables. And also importantly, it makes sense to invest in our region, we have knowledge and skills. So the start of the creative journey, once we'd looked at the research and created a SWOT and some facts behind what we wanted to achieve, was to look at the foundation roots of the brand name. There were different directions we could have taken, connections or collaboration, but what was clear when we spoke to people was that there was a strong feeling it needs to have an energy and power foundation. So we moved on from there and looked at different options within this, and there are just three that we narrowed it down to source, generate and element. And when we spoke with people and looked at the flexibility within there, we found that with generate, one, it says energy, and two, you can use it in multiple ways. You can generate opportunities or connections, investment and innovation. And we felt with a brand that has to deliver so much to so many different people, that was a real strength. So the next stage was the visual identity. We went through lots and lots of different ones and we found a few that we liked, but there was quite a lot of examples where other people have used the same icon. So we had to dismiss a few. We worked around several directions. And the favoured direction was to go with something that had a geographical presence that wasn't too obvious. So we looked at the triangle and the circle, with the triangle representing England and the circle the east of England. And this was very flexible because you can also use those elements to create visual identities of each energy sector, such as solar or wind. And the colour palette was quite tonal and elemental, which again, we thought was useful for this area. We, once we'd looked at that visual identity, we then looked at the lockup and the different colour options and font options that we could look at. And the general consensus, we spoke with the All Energy Industry Council, the All Energy Industry Council marketing subgroup, the East of England Energy Zone Delivery Group and the LEAP and Norfolk Conservative Limited. So we've spoken to lots of key stakeholders and businesses and this was the favoured option. The tagline there is unlimited opportunities in the east of England, but this isn't to say that we will use that on everything, because again, with the brand having to be used in so many different ways, we may adapt it to the event. So you can see at the bottom, we have a global leader for offshore wind, which we would obviously use at an offshore wind event. As well as the visual identity and the name, we looked at adding some texture to how we could use it in the different visual ways. And how it would look with our partners. So obviously we have Eager there it would sit with or any of the stakeholders within Triple Z at the bottom. So we felt it complemented without standing out against all the other quite competitive landscape that we're in. And then looking at marketing collateral, we obviously visualised what this brand would look like as a printed piece. PowerPoints and business cards. Website, this is obviously going to be a key tool for the brand, so it was really important that the branding worked on website and we're working on the final frameworks and visuals for that at the moment. We looked at social media and created an alphabet based on those symbols. And then one of the main parts of the project will be when we go to events, which hopefully we will be attending physical events at the end of the year, and how it would look on a stand or a pop up. And again, because we're looking at different industries and sectors, it may be that we use different colour palettes. An offshore wind, we'd use a blue colour palette, but if we went to a transition event, we might use the oranges and greens, just to show there how it can stand out at an event. And hopefully, if technology doesn't let me down, there should be just a quick overview of the stand. So again, use of the white space and the different colours and obviously a lot of visuals and TVs we can use at events. And then finally, we've created a animation, an animation, a video to promote it and this hopefully will play depending on the bandwidth, but it is available if not. So if I just play this. So I'm hoping that brings to life the work that we've done on the brand and where we want to go with it. The next steps will be, as Michelle said, to look at the launch plan and the marketing strategy and to start, you know, generating those leads and raising awareness of the region and getting businesses and inward investment into the region. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Can I just, before we go to questions, could I just also note that this is, has been working with partners such as the LEAP in terms of their inward investment planning? So we are ensuring that the wider partnership that you would have seen on the presentation slide, the county council, ourselves, the LEAP and the industry through the AIEC, so the All Energy Industry Council, have been included to ensure that we are promoting the area collectively as a whole, that we all have the same voice, the same values and the same outcomes that we're trying to achieve for the industry overall, not necessarily just for one particular area or sector. And the All Energy Industry Council are the kind of overseers of that.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation as well. Very interesting.
Thank you.
If, I've been involved in this for quite a while now, so obviously, energy coast and all sorts of things that we've been through in the past and it's, it's another take on how do we present the area to the energy industries? If you're sat in China looking at England, how do you know where to look at for the energy, just by looking at either a presentation or a map? And again, it's one of those things that energy in the east, the east of England runs from Scotland down to Dover, not Dover, but that coast. So specifically picking up the east of England and the energy coast that we represent, which is, as you said during the presentation and in your paperwork, that we deal with all elements of energy production, but also decommissioning. And we have obviously been trying to promote ourselves as a LOE, a carbon free town or a carbon free area that we are, we're working with the offshore wind industries, we're working with decarbonisation, with decommissioning. And I suppose the offshore wind, onshore winds, oil, gas, nuclear, do you feel in your presentation that you've captured all that we are dealing with in this area that somebody from China would understand? That's the way I always look at these things. If somebody from China can look at it and understand it and say, yes, I know what that's about. You've got, what's it called, generate. In generate, you've got four letters in there which are nearly, you're just missing the G Y for energy. G Y, that's like Great Yarmouth really, but yeah, you've got energy almost in the words, you've got regenerate. I suppose it's there, I can't argue what Michelle said about it being agreed through various other more professional bodies than what I am, but I certainly, when I look at something, I want to know what it's about, where it's about and what it's describing without too much difficulty. If it, if it does that, then I think it hit the nail on the head. I have got questions. I've got Colleen and I've got Tony Wright. Tony first? Sorry?
I think, I think Colleen was first, Chairman.
My apologies, I can't tell when it's not put her hands up. Apologies, Colleen.
Okay, can I just say, I thought that that report was very innovative, great graphics, easy to digest and really understandable. I think it's great work because that would hold anybody's attention and some, some reports don't tend to do that, but I have to say, great job. The only question I wanted to ask is, and I know it's kind of a bigger picture, but it could have an effect, is what has happened with the Vattenfall contract, the court case and the problems that that has caused? Would that impact on stuff that we're going to be doing in Great Yarmouth? Because obviously you're going to need planning consents and other stuff to, not so much place at sea, but to actually install it on land. Do you see that as a problem? If not, then okay, you know, everything about the report is absolutely fantastic, but I didn't want to see jobs at risk because of court cases elsewhere. Thank you.
Can, I was going to say, I think David Glason is probably best to answer in respect of the Vattenfall particular comment, but in terms of this particular approach and brand, this is for all energy across the board and will be across the whole supply chain. So this will still be relevant and it will be, might even be even more important, but I'll leave David to come back on the Vattenfall question.
All right, David?
Yeah, if I may, Chair, it was just a brief point really. Obviously, there's a High Court challenge with regards to the DCO, the Development Consent Order Process for the first Vattenfall project. I mean, that's still going to go through due process. That's absolutely not the end of the project. There's obviously a challenge that's very much live. And with regards to Vattenfall's interest in Great Yarmouth, that still holds true. That's not directly related to this, this particular branding piece, but just, just for a bit of background information, that's, that's where we are with regards to that current High Court challenge.
You all right, Colleen?
Yes, yeah, sorry. Yeah, that's, that's fine. It's just I knew that there was an outcome pending and I knew that, you know, they had connections to Great Yarmouth, so it was just really a question answered though. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tony?
Yeah, just, first of all, again, it's a very comprehensive report and compliments for all of the reports that we've had tonight, you know, just show the strength that we have in the economic development unit, as we've had for many, many years, I think, you know, we go back to the days of Jimmy. And I think, you know, we all stood high above other local authorities in terms of, you know, our initiatives for the energy industry. And obviously, looking at the branding, obviously you need to have a brand for the products that you're trying to sell. And clearly, Great Yarmouth's got a good product to sell it as it has for many years. But we're one of a number of places throughout the UK, certainly on the east side of the UK, where there's a huge amount of competition for, for the business. And I know we're looking at the east of England in terms of, you know, we talk about the East of England Energy Zone now, the generate, but I always look at Great Yarmouth and obviously Lowestoft is the subregion as well as the mainstay of what we're trying to sell. What my concerns are really is, I mean, one of the issues that we look at, and you mentioned it Chairman, is in regard to decommissioning. Now, we've been talking about decommissioning for twenty odd years now and certainly looking at it in terms of what we can, can offer in Great Yarmouth. And indeed, we had some small sections of decommission. I think what we really need to do is looking at the prospectus and what we can offer. I think the mainstay has got to be that we've looking at the new energy products rather than looking backwards, because I think most of the northern ports have got the deep water facilities in which they can obviously dominate the decommission. And believe you me, I mean, decommissioning should be talked about, I think it's about ten billion dollars worth of business in the future, but we've been talking about this for twenty odd years. So it's about trying to concentrate on that. The other issue is that, I think, one of the issues I think we should also concentrate on is the education facilities, the College of Further Education and the significant investment that there's been in East Coles College, certainly in Lowestoft, in the maritime side of things. So I think that's one of the things that when we're trying to attract new businesses, that they look at in terms of whether they want to establish within the area itself. And if you've got a good education facility, which I believe we have between Yarmouth and Lowestoft itself, that in itself is a great selling point because clearly we want to attract youngsters into the industry, but also attract the industry to be able to promote the young people for, for future jobs. But overall, you know, I, I think having a brand is good, but what I want to do is to make sure that, that Great Yarmouth, I'm sure, and I know everybody else does as well, that Great Yarmouth, we are. at Great Yarmouth, I'm sure, and I know everybody else does as well, that Great Yarmouth, we are still the number one energy port as far as England is concerned. I know it's difficult with Humber Side and the amount of investment they've had there, but I still believe that Great Yarmouth's got a huge offering towards the, the industry. And I think that that will long continue, but competition is really stiff out there in terms of this particular business. But as I said, again, a very good report and sums up really everything that we want to hear, but also look to the future as well. In terms of the future of the energy within Great Yarmouth and the subregion itself, but you know, I'd rather look at Great Yarmouth's region rather than, the east of England, which is a massive area and the competition is striking. But well done, everybody.
Thank you, Tony. Michelle, do you want to come back?
I was just going to pick up the comment around skills, which you're absolutely right. Skills for energy could not be more critical at the moment. Because it needs to be pitched in such a way that we're getting new entrants to the industry, not just offshore renewables, but the widest possible supply chain for energy. We're drafting an inclusive growth plan, which is going to be predicated on the skills deficits and understanding of the careers pathways that people can be taking. And that will be cross-sector, but energy will hopefully be part of that. So whilst we don't have that at the moment, that is going to work in line with what we're doing here with Generate and the wider economic growth strategy as well.
That's lovely. Any more comments from members? Don't see anybody putting their hand up. Again, very. Thank you, Sammy. Sarah, very good work. Thank you very much indeed. I think all members have appreciated what you've done here tonight and you've shown us again, a new logo for the east of England that we can, start looking for in all the paperworks that's about to start coming out about energy. So well done on that. And I look forward to it. I really do. And we've reviewed the content of the report and commented on the proposals as well. So I think we can move on from that one. Thank you very much for your presentation. Right. Item eight, Culture Heritage, Heritage and Tourism Strategy and Delivery Plan. Now, we're asked to consider the Head of Inward Investments Report, which can be found on pages 58 to 77. And it's Michelle again. Hello, Michelle.
Hello, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to say, A, you can't see me. So I'm sorry there's an issue with my camera.
We can see you.
Oh, can you? Oh, okay. I've had a couple of messages saying people can't see me. So that's good to hear. The second apology is I don't have a presentation for you. So whilst we've had numbers that we haven't for this particular paper, but I'll walk you through it. And give you some of the highlights that you should be able to have seen in your pack. So as members will no doubt remember, the Culture Heritage and Tourism Strategy was approved. Last summer, July 2020, and we've been working to deliver out the Supporting Action Plan as part of that particular piece of work. And was agreed that that would be a living document, which is why you see an update here today. That has been considered in light of pathway to recovery, as we did with the Economic Growth Strategy and the report that you have, provides you with an update from the last report, which was in October of last year, I believe. So a bit of a background update, we've got four key themes as part of the strategy that focus on the built and natural environment, supporting the culture and tourism sector within the borough. In terms of providing great experiences to both communities that live here, but also the visitors and to strengthen the creative industries, which in the current time, does need critical support. And finally, to encourage the borough to be an all-year-round destination. And I'll come on to some of the ways in which we're hoping to do that collectively. So in terms of the progress that we've been managing, the particular strategy that we're considering today is overseen by the Culture and Tourism Board. Timing hasn't been particularly helpful because we've got one meeting tomorrow. So it would have been helpful to have had that before this particular meeting. But as you will see, there's been a huge amount of progress and support from those sat round the table. And a number of officers have been meeting with partners as well as the Chair, Ian Dunnet from the LEAP. And we've also started to pick up conversations with the LEAP's Culture Board to see where cross-working, cross-versalisation of ideas can happen. And to position ourselves for new funds as they come to light in the future, either through national programmes that might be in response to recovery. But also new things that might be coming out in the future to support the arts industry, either through things like UK Shared Prosperity Fund or through Arts Council England. Already there are ideas coming to the fore, not least to try and submit something for the tourism sector deal. And potentially with the Arts Council's refresh strategy that will be coming on stream in the spring. I won't go over some of the older ground in respect to the need. I think we're clear on the need at the moment. Certainly, COVID has exacerbated the issues that were already felt to a fairly fragile industry in the first instance. Nevertheless, I think we're clear that the support, not least is supportive as required, but also that there's an opportunity once social distancing is reduced and restrictions become fewer in the summer. That actually there's a burgeoning industry ready to come to Great Yarmouth. And actually, we're, we're in prime position to maximise upon that. In terms of some of the projects that we've been developing, I wanted to highlight some of those key things as we have done with our other papers. Two of which are in section four, Experience Project. That's an EU-funded project led by the County Council that we have been working in partnership on. That's primarily focused on improving the seasonality, so reducing that to a summer season to an all-year-round season, which naturally aligns with our thematic four of the strategy. And we've proposed to work with the team to develop new trails, new attractions and incentivised schemes to encourage people to come out of season. And we submitted an application to the Innovator Fund and we're working with the partners, the lead partner County Council to see how we can roll that out. So whilst we weren't actually successful, I can report in that particular application, we are entering a dialogue with the partnership to try and develop that in the funding programme nevertheless. In terms of the Facet Project, that's another EU-funded project. We are a partner in this particular scheme. And we're looking to bring the support into the borough to derive benefit through the environmental impacts of the project. So two core areas relate to, and you can see that in section five, a way in which we can reduce single-use plastics, either through recycling, reducing usage in the first case, or implementing the recyclable containers that you can put those products in. It's like reverse recycling. And then waste cooking oil, obviously being in the industry that we have with a huge amount of takeaways, offering fish, chips, doughnuts, other things that use quite a lot of fat. There's a proposal to collect, capture, store, refine and return cooking oil to reduce the impact on the environment. And the Environmental Health Team with comms and inward investment are working on the, on the rollout of that. In terms of the Winter Programme, we haven't really discussed that this evening, but actually that's something that the council have been working collectively to maximise funding on. The core funders for this are the Town Deal Accelerator Fund and the Norfolk Strategic Fund, which we were successful with, with the County Council to match fund some of the proposals in that. Unfortunately, we've had a bit of a delayed start because the intention was to roll this out from the 2020/21 period. And unfortunately, we've had to move that with support of our funders to the 2020/21 period. So the winter coming up. And we've been developing a programme that relates to both capital infrastructure as well as revenue infrastructure. So you will have hopefully seen the Christmas lights that were brought in and put in situ from the Christmas just passed. And we've tendered for an artistic trail called Fire Over the Water, which we hope to put on in the waterways in October. There are other, of course, other things that wrap around that. Hopefully, we'll have a full events programme, which will bring people back into the borough. Not just in terms of improving the economic impact, but actually bringing them out of season. So that aligns really well with the strategy and what we want to achieve. And you can see the detail of when we hope to do that under section 6.6. We've included a proportion, a small element of this paper to the Heritage Action Zone, another really important project that the council has been successful in bringing in. We will have a full paper that covers the whole project in the not-too-distant future, but we wanted to just give you a bit of a precis as to how this is going. And as you can see, there's a number of schemes that fall within the Heritage Action Zone, not least aligned with the Future High Street Fund to improve. We were talking earlier, weren't we, around the empty and redundant buildings that are around the town? And the bringing back into use those with a viable, sustainable end use, bringing the economy back, not just through residents, but also visitors that should be coming as well as a result of that. Not within this paper, but I'm pleased to report that the Winter Gardens application went in late last week, overseen by Lindsay, our project sponsor. And the wider multidisciplinary team to submit was a significant application to the National Lottery Heritage Fund. We won't hear the outcome of that until the summer months, but we're hopeful that we will be successful, fingers crossed. So we'll keep you posted on the outcomes of that. So I think in terms of sort of wrapping up, that kind of gives you an overview of all the things that we're doing with arts and culture. What we want to achieve in terms of the next steps is actually pick out some of those priorities that need a bit more support. Either that's because there isn't funding available or because we haven't had the capacity to pick it up due to the COVID pandemic. But the meeting tomorrow will pick up on those particular areas, as you can see in section 8.2. Creative workspaces, creative entrepreneurial skills and training are the kind of three key things that we want to pick up with a number of other partners around the table, not least the LEAP and the LEAP's Culture Board. And that will position us particularly well in terms of setting our stall out for any future funds that come in the future. I think at that point, I'll probably close there. I think the rest of the paper you should be able to see in terms of the financial implications and the risks. But I just hope that's an opportunity for you to see some of the work that we're doing to deliver the action plan.
Well, thank you very much, Michelle. Once again, an excellent report, a smorgasbord of actions that you lot have been busy on. And I look at what you've been talking about in Annex A, and it goes on page after page of actions that are going on in this borough to try and turn things around and make it, make it one of the most successful boroughs in the country for accessing, well, all the cultural and heritage that we have to offer here. I mean, we have a wonderful offer. You've put together a package of actions for yourselves to do. And to be honest with you, I don't know where you find the time. You obviously put yourselves, put yourselves out to do that. I'm also impressed as well by your actions in being able to attract the funding as well from all the various different elements that are out there. You seem to have latched on to all of them and tried to put something together which will attract the funding to make it happen. So once again, I'm, I mean, all of what you lot can do down there, but I still think as well that you need to be prioritising what it is you want to get out. Because I don't think you'll be able to do everything, but I think what we need to do is prioritise what it is that you can actually do. I think it's, you can get over, you know, too swamped in the detail if you don't have a clear plan. And here is a clear plan. And like I said, the Annex lays out that plan quite clearly for everybody to see. Congratulations. I do hope that we're successful in all the applications that we put in, especially about the Winter Gardens. We definitely need help with the Winter Gardens, the Winter Programme. Again, extending the season is something we've been talking about since God was a lad. But the, how can I put it? The schemes you've put together do seem to all correlate and move in the same direction, which is to get people here off-season as well as on-season. So I congratulate you on making this paper. Is there anybody looking at, is there anybody put their hand up?
Councillor Brian Walker.
Councillor Walker?
He's just muted, Councillor Walker. Oh, there you go.
It's just a, just a small point, but the reports are good. Don't get me wrong. Having read through them, I think the acronyms at the end would be better off at the front. Because you find it a lot easier to skip back to the front than you do to work your way forward. Just a point.
Yeah, happy to adjust that in the future. That's not a problem and that's a good point. Happy to do that.
Okay, and Councillor Camden?
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, fantastic news here that we put in the application now for the Winter Gardens. That's a project I'm particularly looking forward to seeing it come to fruition for residents of Great Yarmouth. Also, much what Councillor Plank said, I think, you know, if residents want to see the ongoing work that has been going on during, you know, a pandemic, then exactly the actions that Councillor Plank mentioned on the Annex sheets goes to show the proactive work that the council has been doing on top of dealing with other things. My only question is 8.2, along with working with the LEAP's Culture Board, you've got the two bullet points there. Will that be similar to something that the Chamber of Commerce is also doing? Or is that a separate thing altogether?
Can you just redirect me to that point, the reference? I missed exactly where that was.
Page 65 on 8.2.
Ah, okay. Well, they are round the table, the Norfolk Chambers of Commerce. We haven't instigated that yet. That's something for tomorrow's agenda. Ian, as Chair, is hoping to look for a kind of lead. We've prioritised that in partnership with the Preservation Trust, dependent on whether the hub model might fit within the house and also the delivery wraparound care would suit very well Norfolk Chamber of Commerce. So that is in the back pocket, so to speak.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Councillor Camden. I can't see anybody else with their hand up. The recommendations on page 66 are asking us to review and feedback on progress made to develop the 10-year Culture, Heritage and Tourism Strategy and Delivery Plan. And I think we've got an excellent one in place and I commend it to the committee. Okay. Getting a little further. Thank you very much, Michelle. Thank you for your input tonight. Excellent.
Thank you, Councillor Plank.
We'll then move on to item nine, the Quarter Three Performance Report, Economic Development. And this is David Gleason to present.
Thank you, Chairman. The report is relatively straightforward. It's the Q3 Performance Report for Economic Development. And as you will note, the seven of the measures are actually at or above target, which you'll see are green on pages 81 and 82. Obviously, these include major planning applications, noting the fact that virtual DC committee, Development Control Committees have been, you know, the frequency has been increased during the pandemic. Building reg applications are up at 100%. And obviously, we've got a low amount of planning applications overturned at appeal. So throughout the pandemic, obviously, a lot of activity has continued apace. The two areas which your eyes are naturally drawn to are the two reds in that particular report. One is for the non-major planning apps, which are below target for Q3. And I think you'll see in the commentary and certainly on paragraph 2.5, that reflects a period of staff shortages and development control team. I'm pleased to say that through a successful recruitment, phase of recruitment, we've now have a full complement of professional planning staff. And those of you on Development Control Committee have hopefully seen the positive fruits of their labours. We have quite a competent team in place now, having rebuilt that particular team. The cumulative output though does sort of sit at 66%. Should be noted that the actual output for that Q3 alone is up at 74% and it's heading in a positive direction. So hopefully your concerns will be allayed at that particular point. And performance indicator EDO8, which is around land charges, the turnaround time has dipped slightly below the target. It now sits at 78%. In effect, that to do with the fact that private search companies no longer have access to the town hall building in order to complete their work. And there are other parties involved in completing the search, such as county and other parts of our own organisation, which obviously have been dealing with the COVID pandemic. Pleased to say that we've sought additional resource, which is addressing that particular issue in the short term. So hopefully expect land charge turnaround to improve. I think, I mean, that's it. The summary document is short and sweet, but all of the Q3 indicators are there, Chairman, if anybody's got any questions.
Yeah, I, I looked at this, I saw the, the reds and obviously went straight to the explanations and you've covered that quite clearly, clearly now and it seems that it's in hand. Has any member's got any questions of? Big office, huh? I don't see any. Okay, we're asked to note the Quarter Three Performance Report and agree all measures to be monitored during the next quarter. We're going to move on to any other business. I have no any other business. And then we have exclusion of the public to talk about the green papers. Does anybody wish to talk on the green paper? Can you show me? I don't see anybody.
I can't see anybody, Chairman.
Okay. How can we confirm the confidential minutes then? Confirmed by assent?
Sorry, Councillor Walker has got his hand up. Obviously, we can't talk on the minutes.
Did see that.
No, I was putting it up for consent.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
Okay, all right. Well, in that case, that's the end of the meeting. I thank everybody. Thank all the officers for all the hard work you've done to, throughout the year. And to present these reports and the quality of the reports is absolutely fantastic. I appreciate all the work that you've done. And I look forward to seeing you again at the next Economic Development Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Absolutely brilliant meeting that.